It is currently five o'clock. We'll call this meeting of the Belton Independent School District Board of Trustees in order. A quorum of board members is present. This meeting has been duly called and a notice of the meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance to the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now the Texas flag.
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. You may be seated.
We're going to ahead of myself.
That's okay. We're going to kick off our board meeting with a nice little workshop. So at this time, we are going to have a 2017 Bond Projects update by Jared. Thank you, sir. Thank you for being here.
Well, thank you. Good evening for having me here to talk about Bond. So it's been an exciting month here. For you can see here pretty soon the impact of some of the rains. Overall, construction has been going pretty smoothly. Operations? Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
There we go. Okay. So the first one will be Charter Oak Elementary School. So this again is by Cloud Construction. So Kurt last week or last month presented to you, talking a little bit about getting the rest of the structural steel up. And then they were working from the north end to the south end in the framing and MEP. And they are continuing to add staff and workers and trades to the project, making a lot of good construction progress. So you'll see the photo on the top, they're actually starting the roofing. So starting to dry in the building, get the exterior on. So the blue represents the air moisture membrane. And then on the bottom photograph, you'll see that the entire building now has structural steel and decking. So the left side is the white is the roofing and the silver is the decking. So they're going to progress from left to right there in that photo and continue the MEP trade. So a lot of people onsite on that one today. As we move on to Pittenhurst Fine Arts Center renovation, so the last time we were here, they were had a few more details to wrap up in terms of the design. This week they're doing the or this month, they're completing the final clean, working on the exterior and they're about this close to finishing. So we met onsite last week or last or two Fridays ago, talked through some of the details about the signage and the pavers and how to incorporate the beef events there. And then working with the contractor, get a few last details on the inside workout. So we're prepping up here for the ribbon cutting that will come here next month. So we're excited for that one.
This month.
This month?
Next.
Yes, yes. Sorry, I'm thinking about October already. So here soon. And then right now Lakewood, we're not showing that because we're done and we're finished with that one. Another one that is in progress that is nearing wrapping up is the ADA playground improvements. And we will be able to give you an update on all those at one time, but basically went around to each one of the campuses to provide accessible routes to those. So we're working with Vicaro on that one to move that forward. And then finally, Lake Belton High School. So here you see that there's a lot of progress in terms of moving the earth, have dirt happening. And you'll notice actually in the top photo here, if you look at the parking area that's at the bottom of the image, you'll see that that's basically raw dirt and then very little concrete on the image. And then over the last month, you'll now look in that same area and they've started pouring the ribbon curves and curving. Everybody's actually parking in the parking stalls, pretty amazingly. And then as well on the building, you'll see everywhere that is yellow, they're about to pour the slabs or have poured the slabs in terms of the construction. And then they've started in the gym area as well. So that kind of gym and athletic area progressing nicely and working from east to west on this building here. So with that, I will welcome any questions that you have on the construction. Yes, sir.
As you know, I'm on a floor business and y'all do a great job on floors, by the way. But I guess within the last two weeks, I've started getting quite a few letters from our suppliers about price increases, price hikes, concerns because of the tariff. How is this impacting maybe our high school at this point, staying within the numbers?
So it won't affect at all either one. Right now, I couldn't tell you the exact percentage of scoping from the general contractor. I would generally guess they're probably 80 to 90% scoped out at this point, as well as on all four of the projects, really five of the projects, there's a contract in place or guaranteed maximum price. So from Belton's perspective, not y'all's challenge.
We're good.
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
On the Lakewood Elementary, and I only know because I drive past it every single day, are they going to come back in and landscape with grass? Because right now, that whole thing is just dirt.
So they should be revegetating as part of the contract. So that is something that we'll follow up with to make sure that's in place. I know we were having troubles with it on some of the other projects just because of how dry it was and what.
Yeah, I figured that, but now that it's.
And then the reverse, now it's so wet. Yep. So we'll need to make sure that gets in place.
Okay.
I think that's it.
Great. Thank you all very much.
Next up is a fall preliminary demographic update in attendance founders discussion. We're going to have Michelle Box, Templeton Demographics and Dr. Kim Cannon.
Thank you, Board President. My name is Michelle Box. I'm the Research Manager at Templeton Demographics. For anyone who doesn't know me, I've been assisting Bob Templeton with the facilitating some of the discussions that your boundary committee has been having. First and foremost, it's been a great committee. We've had a couple of meetings now and I think it's going along very, very well. So we're excited about the progress that we've made. I wanted to just give a quick, very shortened version demographic update. I want you to be able to see your updated fall enrollment projections that are built into our boundary planning software. So as we do these boundary plans, you need to be assured that these projections are built in, all these developments are built in. I didn't want to make you sit through the whole full thing this time. So first and foremost, just a quick economic update. Again, the Colleen Temple MSA added about 2,600 new jobs in the last 12 months, ending in July. That's a 1.6% annual job growth rate. That's matching the national average, so very healthy job growth in the MSA. That's kept that unemployment rate down below the 4.5 mark. We're sitting right at about 4.2% in the MSA. That's well within what most economists would still call full employment. Again, I think last time I was here, we visited about how that could pose some challenges for the school district and some sectors of your purchasing power with some of your custodial staff, your bus drivers. So that's keeping that low unemployment rate while great for the overall economy can pose a challenge in some other ways. About 3,900 homes have been sold to date in the MSA. That's up just slightly over 2017. And again, that's across the whole MSA. We'll see specifically within the Belton Independent School District, your new home activity is continuing to increase. Not a surprise to anyone. I know this rain slowed everyone down a little bit, but remember from 2014 to 2017, we did see more than a doubling in your new home activity within your district. And that's driven by both the Belton and Temple portions of your district. This year through the first of August, you've had about 400 new home sales within your district. So you're well on pace to meet or surpass your 2017 new home sales. We expect that this year you'll stay within that 650, 700 new homes by 2019 and 2020 due to some new projects coming online. We think you could hit almost 800 homes sold within your district. It's kind of just a quick overview on what where that housing is located. Those green polygons are going to be your active subdivisions. Those are subdivisions with active home building in them. And those yellow are going to be the futures that I've been tracking. Those are proposed developments, future plans, concept plans, any sort of rezoning requests that we've seen through the cities. What's unique about this is that you do see that both sides of your district, both the north and the south. We know that that location for the elementary school site's a great location due to the overcrowding concerns in Purtle and in Tarver and the growth we're seeing there. But you also have the challenges in the south. And that's where I'm going to show some of those numbers with those new student geocode to kind of reiterate that. But within your district, about 1,700 lots are currently available to build on, about 6,200 future lots planned within your district. And again, looking at building about 700 homes in 2018. This is looking, you know, benefit of working with you guys year over years, that we get to keep this student geocode data and we can see how your district has been changing geographically over the years. So this is, we want to see how many students are coming out of what types of housing within your district. So this is a residential yield analysis. You can see here, your added district student numbers have been increasing. So you're seeing more transfers in from outside the district. That could be a combination of students that want to be in Belton ISD because it's a great district and also teachers, children coming into the district as well that may live outside your district. Total students, you've added more than 1,000 students in the last three years. And we've actually seen a decline in the number of students in your multifamily housing. So multifamily, this is apartments and manufactured home communities. While you've added multifamily units, the number of students within those units is declining and those yields has actually declined a little bit. And really, that's because of your single family growth. So you've added just over or just under 1,800 homes in these last three years and you've seen about 1,200 students coming out of those 1,800 homes. So I just want to hit home that that is a lot of students for that number of homes. Your single family yield right now is about a .62. That's a, that's a very strong yield from what we're used to seeing. Typically, a .4 to .5 is average. So a .6 overall district yield is a very high yield. That shows that these new homes are bringing young families with children who want to be within your district. It's a desirable area, definitely seeing the families that are growing here. Looking at your student distribution, this is kind of a quick update from the one I showed you last year, based on last year code. Within the Belton ISD boundary, 3,600 students or about 32% of your students reside actually within the city of Belton. This is up about 120 students over last year. The city of Temple portion within your district has seen about 200 student increase and they hold about 34% of your student population. So very, they're kind of neck and neck, but the Temple, the northern part of your district is eking out, growing a little bit faster than the Belton side of your district. About 780 students reside within the city of Morgan's Point Resort. That has remained pretty flat from last year. And about 2,900 students reside in unincorporated the county portions of your district, about 100 students up from where they were last year. So you're seeing growth in all different portions of your district and that's a challenge that your attendance committee is having to face now. And again, about 51.7% of your students reside north of the Leon River. So you are still seeing that almost 50/50 split on the north-south, but it has eked up just a little bit in that north. Again, is that north's growing a little bit faster. I also have two slides here that are really just trying to give a little bit of context to some of the discussions we've been having in our attendance zone committee. So the first one is newcomers by planning areas. So those are a lot of buzzwords that we use internally at our, at our company. Planning areas are almost like census blocks. We break your district into small bite-sized pieces so we can study smaller pieces at a time. These are neighborhoods, these are apartment complexes, basically city blocks. So we're looking at the total number of students that are new to your district within these planning areas. And to define a newcomer, we look at your student geocode and we look at any student ID that is present in this student geocode that was missing last year. And we exclude EE, pre-K and kindergartners because all of them are new to your district. So this is looking at pure first to 12th grade, who is a new student that is the first time within Belton ISD. So I've then put this on the map and show kind of a density map. So the darker the color, the more students within that planning area are new. So not surprisingly, they're concentrated where your new single family developments are. You can see the Three Creeks area stands out and you can see some of the developments, the Lake Point development, some of the developments in the northern in the city of Temple stand out as well. The kind of hash marks have overlaid your active subdivisions on that map as well. And then I've just gone ahead and summed up those total new students by the elementary zone that they reside within. So you can see that the challenge again that your attendance zone is facing, your attendance committee is facing is that Tarver had 269 newcomers in the last year and Chisholm Trail had 250. Your most northern zone and your most southern zone are neck and neck in the number of new students coming into their district. So that's, that's the fun that they've been having on some of the drawing those boundaries. And this really just goes to show that while Charter Oak is a great spot for some, for its location to handle some of this growth, it does mean that we can't just put it in the middle of a boundary and draw its own boundary out of one. This is going to require several boundary moves to be able to address all of this growth across your district. So the second one is the economically disadvantaged students by planning area. Still looking at the total number of students within those planning areas, so those kind of small pieces within your district. And we define economically disadvantaged by free and reduced lunch enrollees. And this is provided, this is information provided to us by the district in the student file. This is simply a total number of students that we have coded as economically disadvantaged. And this has just come up as, as part of a consideration or a factor in drawing these attendance zone boundaries. This is something that your committee has asked about and is paying attention to. So we simply wanted to show you a map of where the density of those students are located. The Chisholm Trail Elementary currently has just over 1,000 total economically disadvantaged student within it. Southwest has about 730 and High Point has 679. And we do want to clarify, and this is something Bob mentioned to the attendance zone committee, that these numbers are still in flux this time of year. So this was taken from an early September student file. So these numbers may change slightly as the year progresses and some of these applications are ironed out. Finally, your 10-year enrollment forecast. This is your, your new 2018-19 enrollment. As of September 5th, this is a September 5th enrollment, you had 11,876 students in your district. We had forecasted 11,963. It's a difference of 87 students. So we're within our 1% margin. We're feeling really good about our numbers. We're glad you guys came in right on track. So boundary planning's going well because we were forecasting right on track there. And this is, we do forecast in October to October, we forecast PMS enrollment. So we do expect that to tick up a little bit until the kind of October snapshot period. So that number will increase slightly. Currently, we have forecasted more than 12,300 students for your next school year when you're going to be opening your Charter Oak Elementary School. In five years, we think you could add just under 2,200 students within your district for a 2023 enrollment of 14,074. And in 10 years, we think you could add about 4,300 students for a 2028 enrollment of 16,000, just under 200. This is what that looks like at the elementary level. Again, there's lots of yellow on that map, but that's where that Charter Oak School is going to take care of a lot of that. We do have plans that are going to buy the elementary schools at least five years of capacity relief. So that's a part of the consideration that the attendance committee is currently facing. Chisholm Trail Elementary is still growing very quickly, as well as the Tarver Zone. We think that by 2020, you can enroll about 6,000 total elementary school students. And at the secondary level, again, that middle school is going to be coming online in 2020. Both Lake Belton and North Belton are projected to be over 1,000 students at that time. And then the Belton High School will have more than 3,100 students by 2020. Again, just to sum up, unemployment rate's still very low. Number of new home sales has been continuing to increase within the Belton Independent School District and those new homes are yielding a strong number of students. Your Charter Oak Elementary in 2019, your Belton Middle School and Lake Belton High School in 2020 will help relieve some of those capacity concerns. And you've got a great attendance committee that's going to be facing that challenge at this time.
Thank you.
Are there anything I can, any questions I can answer or anything I can help with at this point?
I would just like to say, you know, sitting in on those attendance boundary meetings have been so great. And I mean, Templeton Demographics, your graphs and your charts and your maps, they're honestly my favorite part of our agenda packet because they're so fascinating. And I, I studied them down to the little, all the little numbers and I just, I think it's so amazing. And you've always, they've always been just dead on with their predictions.
Thank you.
You know, and they're conservative in it and it's still just, they do such a great job. And I think everybody I've talked to who is a part of this process, who has done it before, is saying it's running so smoothly now. And I think it's 100% because who can argue with all this information? And it's, it really is helping everybody see it and, and really receive the information as, as truth. So, thank you.
Thank you.
We wanted to give you all an opportunity to talk about the attendance boundaries process. Janet did that a little bit. Anything you noticed, anything you need, and just an opportunity for the board to visit about that this evening. We've had two meet, two really good meetings, I think. And I know Michelle and Bob will bring some more maps to the next meeting on October 1st that were requested with some, just looking at some different areas. And you heard that conversation, there was an area along the lake, another area out 93 that was of interest to the committee. And then anything else that you all would like to see, we'd be happy to produce those maps to share with the committee.
Well, you know, one of the things that I heard in our last meeting, parents or the committee concerned about ensuring that their, whatever school, whatever high school they end up in is taken to consideration. They got, right about middle school, things kind of change and, you know, you're a middle school or you've, if you've gone elementary the whole time together and then maybe gone to a, a different middle school, the big concern that I heard was this, as long as they end up in the same high school together. That may or may not be something that you all heard, but I know that was one of the major talks at a table near where I was sitting. Good. Anybody else want to share out anything you've talked about?
I think Michelle heard that as well. And we've, we've been talking about some maps, so that's great.
Yeah, I'll just have to share, I'll be looking forward to the next one because there were, there were some scenarios at our, at each table that I know y'all have already thought through that are going to be able to come to more of a visual, you know, fruition this next time for people that, that had certain concerns. Y'all are going to show them why that may be some of those things. It's, it's not as easy to mix and match and take something and put it out. So I'm, I was looking forward to that next, this next one to show the, you know, the mock-up maps to, you know, put some of that stuff maybe a little bit more at ease for those people.
Absolutely. It's always weighing pros and cons. Unfortunately, there's never a, a super simple, this is the way to do it. So.
I think this next one will clarify some of that a lot of it.
Yeah. Yeah, I just want to thank you for the support during the meetings. I know my table in particular was doing a lot of, tried to do some rejiggering of what it was, hey, let's take a couple of streets from here and move them over there. And, you know, you all were just amazingly responsive and kind of doing some of that real time. And I think the group was, I think amazed by the numbers, right? And I think when you look at the numbers and when you kind of see the, see them move around, you know, the answers seem to start to appear. I'm not suggesting we're there.
Yeah.
But the, the group was very grateful for, for your responsiveness.
Well, anything else we can help with going forward, just call or email, so.
Thank you.
Michelle's been very helpful, even as developers call and, and have questions about properties or let us know about properties. I've been able to reach out to her and she, most of the time, she already knows about it. But if not, she's, she's been very responsive to our needs. So very much appreciate you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Very good. So we've, we are at a point where we're ready to administer oath of office to our newly appointed trustees for Area 2 and 5. So for Area 2, we have Ms. Rosie Montgomery, Dr. Rosie Montgomery, please come forward. We're going to do both of them at the same time? Okay. And Manuel Koster for Area 5, if you'll come forward. And Ms. Connie will administer oath of office. And then we'll play musical chairs in a minute.
Stand up.
There.
If I could get you all to raise your right hand? You repeat after me where I state my name. Please state your name. I, Connie Byrne. I surrender. You solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of the Office of School Board Trustee for the Belton Independent School District of the State of Texas and will, to the best of my ability, preserve, protect and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States and of this state. So help me God. Congratulations. If I could get you to sign your oath.
Yay.
Okay. You figured it out?
Yeah.
Congratulations.
I'm being nice. I'm being nice.
We're switching over.
Yeah.
Changing it up on it.
Chairs. Okay, is Manuel coming here?
Manuel is going in.
Yay. All right. Thank you, Connie.
There.
You don't have to be.
Sir. Welcome.
Great.
Thank you.
Welcome back. We should make it.
You should make it what?
Like family reunion. He left the certificates down here.
It looks a little different down there.
Different perspective.
Alrighty then. That's awesome.
Can we say anything about that?
Absolutely. Go ahead, go ahead.
I just want to say, we're very happy to have Rosie and Manuel. They, we, we feel blessed and fortunate that they came along for this application process. We had a lot of good candidates to look at and, and they, they are excellent assets and we're looking forward to working with them. Thank you all for being here and we're excited.
Thank you.
We're excited to have every chair filled. Yay. Full house. Full house. We're going to get to our recognitions a little bit later because we're just moving along kind of fast. So at this time, we will, the next item on the agenda will be the consent agenda. Does any board member have any item they'd wish to have pull for discussion? Nope. If not, then I will entertain a motion for the consent agenda to, oh, thank you, Mr. Ty. I've got a first from Ty. Is there a second? A Chris, a Chris, a second from Mr. Flor. Thank you. All hands, all in favor? All hands approved? Thank you. Consent agenda approved as listed. So Dr. Kim Cannon, do you want to go ahead and get us started with the superintendent's report?
Be happy to.
Thank you. Tell us all about the Pittenhurst Fine Arts Center and Capital Projects. Fun stuff.
Okay. Jared gave you an update on the Pittenhurst Fine Arts Center earlier this evening. I just want to reiterate that we do have substantial completion on the facility and the contractor is working through the punch list. We expect to be able to bring that project to you in October for closeout for the board's acceptance. Our first event in the facility is scheduled for this Thursday evening at 5:30. We will hold our junior scholars event there. And that event is to recognize our Duke Talent TIP students. And those are students who, based on their high achievement on STAR or an IQ test, qualify to take the SAT or the ACT as a seventh grader. We do have a guest speaker on that evening and it will be Dr. Randy O'Rear from the, the president from the University of Mary Harden-Baylor. We're excited about honoring those students. I think we have about 200 of those students to honor on Thursday evening. And more importantly, we want to stress to them, it's really important that they take the SAT and the ACT and they get on a path to National Merit Scholar. And so we're excited about that time with them. Then next week is our dedication event. You see the invitation on the screen that will be held on Tuesday morning at 8:30. We'd love to have you there for that event if you're able to make it. We have students performing from Sparta Elementary. We'll have some speakers and we'll do a ribbon cutting as well. Facility looks great. I did find a 1967 yearbook that had a picture of students in the auditorium, almost every chair filled that I could see. We'll try to have that up on one of the screens, but it was a really cool picture that was back in, in 67. I believe the facility was completed in 66. So we'll have a fun time celebrating that. And I'll look for you there. Capital Projects, Jared Sturzinger with O'Connell Robertson, last updated and presented our Capital Projects list to the board in the spring. And that's a document that outlines the construction or renovation projects that we have identified to complete as funds become available. So the board did, did take a look at that in the spring. Since that time, I've asked Jared to update the document for review again with you. We'll do, we plan to do that next month. And he will make some adjustments to the document to reflect the work that was done on accessibility with our elementary playgrounds, as well as the athletic improvements that were made in the soccer fieldhouse to accommodate multiple sports, including the baseball locker room. We've also added at the request of Mr. Taggart, some options for addressing the gym facilities and air conditioning at Leon Heights, Miller Heights and Southwest Elementary Schools. And then this, today, I actually asked him to take a look at the press box at Tiger Field to see how we might be able to renovate that home press box. To my knowledge, that's not ever been done. And it's, it's not, it's in need of some renovations. So I wanted to mention that to you this evening, that that's coming. Certainly, we can't complete all of the projects on that list, but we'll ask the board to prioritize those and we'll continue to look at our funding.[1746.45] to accommodate multiple sports, including the baseball locker room. We've also added, at the request of Mr. Taggart, some options for addressing the gym facilities and air conditioning at Leon Heights, Miller Heights, and Southwest Elementary Schools. And then this, today, I actually asked him to take a look at the press box at Tiger Field to see how we might be able to renovate that home press box. To my knowledge, that's not ever been done. And it's not, it's in need of some renovations. So I wanted to mention that to you this evening, that that's coming. Certainly, we can't complete all of the projects on that list, but we'll ask the board to prioritize those and we'll continue to look at our funding. We do have some bond money that we could use and we really don't know, until we get further along in these projects, how much more we might have in savings from this 2017 bond program. But we want to have the list updated and ready to go and have you had it prioritized so we can move when we're able to do that. Is there anything else you would like to see added? And I'll be sure and get you a copy of that most recent form to Dr. Montgomery and Mr. Alcozzer. Can you all think of any other projects that weren't on there last year that you're interested in? Nope. Okay. Very good. That's all I had this evening for you.
Good comment?
Yes.
I was up there a couple of weeks ago doing something for the athletics guys and I got to tour the new locker facility. Wow. What a, what an efficient spent, expenditure of money. There wasn't a nickel wasted in there. It was wonderful. It's going to serve so many kids. It's so nice and clean and I can't wait to see what the coaches will do to the walls and how they'll turn it all into their own. But it was, it's wonderful, first class.
We're really proud of that project. That was some space that Jared helped us to identify, actually, that we could convert and do more with than we were doing and it does, it did turn out really great. So thank, I think Jared's gone, but good eye, he had good eyes for that. Yeah. David, and of course David, we did the work internally and so we're able to save quite a bit of money on that. So very appreciative. And I know Coach Morgan's happy with it. He did. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item that we'll take up is review and discuss campus culture spotlight, South Belton Middle School and Purtle Elementary with Dr. Rochelle Warren.
Good evening.
Good evening. I am very excited that my first board presentation as an actual Belton ISD employee is celebrating the work that is already happening on our campuses. So the purpose of tonight is really to begin an ongoing presentation that we'll be making that is going to highlight the kinds of exciting things that are happening on all of our campuses that specifically relate to our district priorities. And that includes the work that we're doing in social emotional learning. And we're going to start tonight with Purtle and South Belton Middle School. So first up, we want to just give you an idea of what South Belton Middle School looks like in terms of its demographic information so that you have a picture of the campus. Then we want to talk more specifically about the district priority that really focuses on campus cultures, which for us here in Belton allows social emotional learning to be part of our safety initiative and really making sure that all of our campuses are creating and sustaining inclusive learning environments. For South Belton Middle School, they very intentionally created an advisory plan for the first three weeks of school that was going to prioritize building community and empathy among its student community. And the lessons during this concentrated period of time incorporated their No Place For Hate launch, use of some avid strategies and some other topics that were discussed in their back-to-school professional development. So right from the beginning, they were integrating multiple topics that spanned things that had been included before school started and going back to previous initiatives. For one of their lessons within this three-week period, they decided to focus on David's Law based on the presentation that they had heard during our admin retreat by the mother of David. This particular lesson was deemed to be particularly conducive to student understanding by Mr. Taylor and his team. And they also felt that this would be a proactive approach to addressing cyberbullying. So giving their students something that they could do very intentionally and relatively easily to address concerns about cyberbullying. This is sample formatting, but specifically addressing the David's Law lesson. All grade levels participated in these lessons that occurred during the first three weeks of school. As a result of the David's Law lesson and as a cumulative effect of the three-week concentration, South Belton Middle School is expecting fewer incidents of inappropriate behavior via social media, electronic device, or face-to-face. Teachers are already reporting deeper, more meaningful conversations regarding tough topics like cyberbullying. And these Monday lessons, this went from a three-week concentration to a Monday focus where the newly-formed SEL committee continues to design lessons that teachers are able to then facilitate. And that committee is incorporating some student survey data that they collected during the three-week launch. Our second campus that we are.
Can I say something about that?
Yes.
So just a little background for context, our summer administrative retreat was on school safety issues and student well-being. But we did it in an interesting way by bringing in Google to teach all of our leaders a design thinking process. And so the outcome of that was campus teams coming up with strategies for their individual campuses to meet some of the challenges that we asked them to meet. We had four challenges around safety topics. Maureen Molak of David's Law, she was, is the mother of David, whose son committed suicide as a result of cyberbullying, was, had just a very powerful message to us. And so this is one example of how that, the learning from the administrative retreat was taken back and used on the campus in a very direct way with students. So really proud of all of our campuses and as we look at the work that they're doing, there's evidence of the learning that occurred together this summer. Was really impressed with this, the lesson plans that I saw for South Belton Middle School. Multiple lesson plans on cyberbullying. This was just one example. But using that, what was learned and teaching the kids, I've forgotten the concept of Maureen Molak, to not use your device, to be an upstander. It was that, that was her con, her word, I believe. But to be an upstander and to not participate in bullying. And so the little sticker you see is a symbol to the kids that they shouldn't participate in that online misbehavior that's hurtful to other students. It's good stuff.
It was. And actually, I think that design thinking in particular allowed us to pull together several different things that were happening in a really intentional, strategic way on our campuses and at the district level. So you will, you will hear those themes over and over and over as we are spotlighting the work that they're doing. For Purtle Elementary, similarly, we wanted to give you a demographic picture of the campus and also wanted to extend that review of data. In Purtle's case, they took a look at some other ways of looking at their campus and the kinds of data that they collect. And through a specific review of campus referral data, they eliminated a frequent usage of in-school suspension and out-of-school suspension that Ms. Vaughn and her team wanted to interrupt. And so in looking again at this particular district priority, they wanted to identify some options for approaching behavior differently. And as they were thinking through that, they committed upfront to using Belton ISD resources. So Ms. Vaughn talked very specifically about how there are experts right under our noses that we can use to help us as we are moving forward and those experts will be, will continue to be easily available to us as we are implementing and making changes. And so some of those resources included Jessica Almos, Jim Deacon, and the newly hired SEL director. The first major step for them was really making a mind shift to looking at behavior in the same way that you would look at academics, which means that there are explicit skill-based instruction that you can do and then targeted interventions as needed. As they were having this conversation on their campus, we were also increasing our partnership with Emergentry to have a larger impact on our campuses. And so they found yet another connection to something that was happening district-wide that would make sense and support the work that they were doing on their campus. Overall, what they are looking to do is twofold. They want to preserve maximum instructional time. There's obviously a loss of time that the student experiences if you are in school, in in-school suspension or out-of-school suspension. But likewise, there's a disruption to that entire classroom environment that results in a loss of time. And so they really wanted to be able to maximize their instructional time. And they wanted to make sure that the entire staff consistently spoke a shared language in terms of behavior. So as a result, those smiling faces that you see on there are representing some of the strategies that they are using, like greeting individual students as they enter the classroom daily, which allows students to feel noticed right at the beginning of the day and also allows the teacher to conduct a quick assessment of that child's well-being as they are starting the day. There are members of a newly-formed Behavior Committee and other designated staff members who are considered safe spaces for students who are struggling with behavior. So that provides another way for students to self-regulate, knowing that there is an adult who is tagged to help them. And they are also using restorative circles. And restorative circles is a particular strategy that Jim Deacon shared with them during a training in August that allows students to not just have a punishment, but really talk more about how they can be included and not necessarily lose instructional time while still being able to be held accountable for the disruption that is provided and to talk more thoroughly about the impact that disruption is having on their peers. As they move forward, what they're looking to have happen is increased self-efficacy by their students and responsibility in partnering with their teachers to manage their behavior, but overall to sustain the safe, inclusive learning environment for all of their students. So what you're seeing in these first two spotlights is really a very intentional, strategic combination of multiple district initiatives, all designed to ensure that all of our students are in a safe, inclusive learning environment, day in, day out. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Want to elaborate, Rochelle, on those district initiatives and kind of tie that all together?
Well, from these particular ones, we had a variety of things that were going on. So No Place For Hate is one that I initially was able to connect with Belton ISD on, but it's now a, an effort that all of our campuses are engaged in to be really focused and intentional on creating a respectful learning environment where all students are feeling included. There were some avid strategies that campuses, depending on whether you were middle school, elementary, high school, and what subject area, two different strands that we used. But in both strands, the whole purpose was to demonstrate strategies that could then be taken back to be applied in any classroom. So Avid is a program that is really focusing on students who are kind of floating in the middle without a plan necessarily for college, but who are certainly capable of going to college. And what we found to be true is that many of the strategies that we would use for Avid can be really successful with other students as well. And so our folks participated in some avid strategy training this summer as well. And that was reflected in those lesson plans that South Belton Middle School did and show up in other ways too for both of our campuses. Additionally, we, kind of the strategizing overall was really jump-started by the design thinking and a combination of the design thinking and the power of moments, I think is a really powerful combination for us that allowed our administrators to think more specifically about how they can, from moment one, really let students know that they are valued and seen as assets on the campus and allow students to feel, to provide a little more trust to the adults who are responsible for taking care of them. Then David's Law, that presentation, that one. And then the one that we also heard from Save and Sound Schools, which reminded us of the importance of safety, not just in terms of emergency preparedness. This was the mom of a Sandy Hook student who died in that tragedy, but in paying attention to the little things. And so when you think about what Purtle is dealing in terms of greeting every student first thing in the morning, it's that kind of connection, that kind of attention to detail that allows our students to really feel like they're being, they're being noticed and that what's happening with them matters and will be factored into the rest of the day. Likewise, the start, really in a grassroots fashion, because we've not necessarily put out any infrastructure just yet, but the establishment of these SEL committees where campus staff members are coming together to think very specifically and strategically about how they take social emotional learning and weave it into everything else that's happening on a campus. If I were to have our principals list all the different programs and initiatives that they have happening on their campuses, I think all of our heads would spin. But the, the beauty really of social emotional learning within a safety context is the fact that it all boils down to providing that safe, inclusive learning environment. And so when you start, when you think of it as that overall glue, if you will, that weaves through everything and helps pull things together, pair that with the design thinking, with the power of moments, and that's how you have the kinds of work that we're seeing on our campuses.
Quick question. What are, as we move forward with all of these different initiatives and how, what are our thoughts about proving it or assessing its success with our students, either in the moment or in the week or, or over a longer term of time, a year or two years? How, what are our thoughts on how we're going to see that what we're doing is, is really affecting them?
Well, your question at the district level is really part of what our soon-to-start focus group will be addressing, is looking at the assessment. Informally, one of the examples would be the student survey data that South Belton Middle School collected. I wish I'd included a slide of that as well with the questions that they were asking, but very pointed questions asking about the environment and how students feel about the environment on the campus. And I understand that you can't really quantify a feeling, but perception is reality. And so if our students are not feeling connected, then that's something we need to address. And so there are already those kinds of efforts happening on our campuses to find out exactly how students are feeling about being on campus. And then those SEL teams and other teams, so the Behavior Team at Purtle is another example, are taking that student input to help them really focus on what they need to do next. But we are definitely going to include assessment as part of our ongoing district effort to make sure that what we're doing, this investment that we're making, is actually resulting in something meaningful for our students.
Being a former classroom teacher and I'm old school at heart, I think last spring we had the Emergentry people come in and I didn't really understand a lot of what they were talking about. I don't know how some of this is going to work because I, when I was teaching, I was more concerned about the 20-something that were there to learn versus the one that just couldn't get it, didn't want to get it. So how is this going to work with these strategies? We still are going to have a way to take those kids and deal with them in other places to concentrate on the rest of the kids, right?
Oh, absolutely. The whole point really is ensuring that all of our students have a safe, inclusive learning environment. So there are things that are working. So there are things that are working for a certain population of students, but then we need to think creatively to address those students for whom those things aren't working.
One year, I was an AEP teacher, and that was the kids that were really kind of out there, and we didn't do much for them. They did their work, that's it. So was that, are y'all trying to change some of those type of things where, when they are kind of those in-between kids that hadn't figured it out, we're still going to give them some meaningful learning rather than punishment? Is that what we're talking about here?
Our standards academically are not going to shrink for any of our students. So excellence is still our standard, that's still the goal. What we are looking to do, though, is diversify our path to that excellence. So some of our students just need more and different. And so by forming partnerships with vendors like Emergentree, by using Avid strategies, by looking at opportunities for students to give us input on what they're seeing and hearing, by giving them some strategies that they can use to self-regulate their behavior and having some steps involved, maybe before or instead of just an automatic punishment, we're allowing our students then to really participate more, my bias, more appropriately in a shared responsibility for managing their behavior. So it's not solely a teacher's responsibility to make sure that every single student is connecting in the way that they're supposed to. What we found to be true is that the, when we are explicit in teaching our students how to partner and how to self-regulate, then they are able to perform better academically.
Thank you.
So are we specifically focusing our efforts on South Belton and Purtle right now? Or is this a spotlight on what's going on?
They just happen to be the first two.
I mean, I know they have pretty special cultures, right, in those campuses already?
You'll hear from all of our campuses.
Yeah, so what mechanisms do we have in place to kind of share the lessons that are learned, the things that are working, you know, turn that around quickly to the other campuses, you know, and really leverage that? Is that the advisory group that's getting ready to start, or?
Well, yes, the focus group will do some of that, but there is already a pre-existing mechanism from last year. So our principals have just recently started having Principal Learning Days. And part of that is really an opportunity for them to have their own professional development and share best practices with colleagues, with folks who get it in terms of the Belton ISD way. And so there's already a method for us to make sure that we can share stories like this and spread it. But the focus group will join them in that effort.
And I would add that our principals are very collaborative. They share each other's weekly memos to the entire admin list, so they can see what each other are doing and visit with each other on a regular basis. But the innovation is definitely there. And so the goal with the spotlights was to share it and really highlight the work that they're doing, and it's happening at every campus. And it's really exciting to watch. We, this has been, we've been building this for the last three years. And this year, especially with the addition of the design thinking work that we did and the Emergentree training and our guest speakers, it's just all coming together beautifully. And so the goal really is to be proactive and to work on those campus cultures and help build skills in kids. Does it preclude us from having, you know, regular consequences for misbehavior, but we're trying to prevent behavior before it happens? And so it's been a really good approach for us.
I know that, as a teacher myself, and I shared this with Susan, it wasn't until the end of my time teaching that I started to get a little more creative with some of my disciplinary techniques, because a lot of them that I had done just from the old standard, traditional, you know, sitting out at recess and think, they'd just, they'd come back the next day the same way, and it didn't help me and it didn't help them. And I would have really liked a whole tool bag of things that I could have used daily instead of just trying to come up with it on the top of my head. I would have liked professionals to help me with that. So this is great for teachers. Thank y'all.
And it is a part of our comprehensive safety and security elements that we presented in July. So if you will recall, or not, if you're new, we rolled out those elements, and those were partnerships with law enforcement, devices, having emergency plans. But a big piece was the students themselves. And so when you think of safe schools and security in schools, a lot of the safety issues that we face come from our students themselves. And so we're working on the people. And we want to continue to develop better people in our schools and help mentor and nurture our students.
Can I have just one more question? You know, I mean, obviously, we're here for the kids. That's our number-one focus on everything. What are y'all going to do for the employees as well, the culture? Are y'all looking into some of those things as well, making sure the teachers are comfortable and they're feeling safe and they're comfortable with their plans and those type of things? Are y'all looking into those?
Absolutely. And I'll go back to when I was the outside vendor coming in, providing professional development. But one of the very first reactions, if you will, to the training that we were doing by the campus and district administrators was how are we going to use this with our staff members, not just how is this going to go to our students? And so they were already thinking about that two and a half, three years ago. The focus group, once we're up and running, that will be included in what we're doing. So this is not an effort that we want really as an either-or, but as a yes-and. We want to make sure that we are creating cultures that are inclusive and safe for teaching and learning.
Anybody else have any other questions, sir?
I have one question. Dr. Warren, you had mentioned, and all this is new to me, a lot of this lingo is new to me, but Dr. Kincanon mentioned and asked you a question about multiple district initiatives to help all students, is what you said. Will these multiple district initiatives, will they be different for kids that are older, like the high school kids versus the kids at South Belton Middle School? Are they going to be different? Do you approach kids in a different way once they're older and they haven't been approached, they haven't been exposed to some of these initiatives that these young kids are going to be exposed to?
The beauty of the examples, at least that I mentioned tonight, is that from a holistic viewpoint, there, it's the same concept. So design thinking is design thinking no matter where you are. No Place For Hate is still a student-led initiative to get them sharing their responsibility for creating a respectful learning environment. So those kinds of things are the same. What makes it special is that every campus, though, is able to really customize it to their student population. So No Place For Hate is not going to look the same at Purtle Elementary, or South Belton Middle School, or Belton High School. So all of these initiatives really allow the campuses to identify what their students need and to prioritize from there. What the district goal does, the district priority does, is provide them a catalyst for that kind of design thinking. But yes, customization absolutely happens.
And Ms. Lee had asked you about how do you measure effectiveness? Is it the same for the kids that are older? Same approach?
That's something that we'll decide, that we'll decide through the focus group, just exactly how we want to quantify what we're seeing on our campuses. Right now, I would say again, that depending on the campus, they are approaching that completely different. But in general, the idea of student surveys works at every campus, but it's not going to look the same with our youngest students versus our older students.
Thank you, ma'am.
Are you going to have an identified list of which schools are next? I'm sorry.
No, ma'am, we have not yet.
So do the, will the focus group include any students, particularly at the upper levels, maybe some of our students who have been through Belton High School that have kind of watched some of the changes or through the middle schools?
We have talked about that, so we haven't figured out just yet exactly what their participation would look like, but yes, that is one of those best practices out there that we think would be meaningful to us.
And I know that in the No Place For Hate, they had student committees as a part of what they came up with for their campus project for that, and I love that idea.
Okay, well, thank you so much. We really appreciate that, Dr. Warren. I believe we're getting ready for some student recognitions. Ms. Elizabeth, are we ready? Okay, we'll give them a minute to come on in.
Correct. And I really would just say, I see we didn't have any public comments this evening. And you could verify, but yeah, you probably need to call.
I was going to identify it and then just say that.
Yeah, you do. She'll pass them up to you. She gets them in there, maybe one right there. Yeah, they just get them up here. Hopefully not. So that's our one.
Sorry, I didn't know what I was going to say. Getting a note? What did she do?
Yeah, I'm not aware of any public comments. Is that correct, Ms. Burns? And that should do it.
Okay. Yes, ma'am. Good recognitions.
Thank you. First up, we have a UIL State Solo and Ensemble Contest Outstanding Performer. Belton High School Senior Violinist Mariah Montgomery competed at the UIL State Solo and Ensemble Contest and achieved outstanding results. Mariah's performance not only received a superior rating from the judge, but she was also named an Outstanding Performer. This special designation only went to six violinists in the state. The BHS Orchestra is directed by Mr. Fairley. Mr. Fairley, want to join the picture? Viola.
Hey, Chris.
Violist.
Better stand with her daughter.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
This recognition was planned before.
It's okay.
It's all good. You can still begin.
There's more kids. Come on, stay there.
Congratulations, Mariah, on your violist achievement. Thank you.
Okay.
You can't have so many pictures now.
Quite possibly.
Anybody else want the next one?
Is this anybody else's child?
Yeah. Next up, the Texas Choral Directors Association Elementary Honor Choir. The Texas Choral Directors Association Elementary Honor Choir, which performed for over 1,000 choral directors and families from across the state in July, featured six Belton ISD students. Each vocalist was chosen to be a part of the 150-member state choir after completing an audition last spring. More than 800 fourth-through-sixth grade students from across Texas auditioned. And again, Belton ISD had six of those 150 students. The Belton ISD choir members included from Lake Belton Middle School Noel Dieter and Sedesha Ellis, and from South Belton Middle School, Micah Blackburn, John Gaunt, Liam McRae, who can't be here because of football tonight, and Daphne Ortiz. I'm on it. Accompanying them tonight are their choir instructors, Leon Heights Choir Teacher and Former Elementary Vice President for the Texas Choral Directors Association, Ms. Deborah Johnson is here, as well as South Belton Middle School Choir Director Charlotte Werman, who supported these students through the audition and performance process. Congratulations. And we'll hold for a moment so parents can come take a picture. One more picture? Are we good? Okay. Congratulations.
That's a big deal. That's a real big deal to be selected. So congratulations to those young folks. Very proud of them.
All right, good evening. Yeah, so Kelly Sanders is here this evening. She's been recognized by the Temple Rotary Club. And her principal, Ms. Connor, is here as well. Kelly serves as a fifth-grade English Language Arts, Social Studies, and Science Teacher at Miller Heights Elementary, and she's in her 15th year in education and her third year with Belton. She serves as a grade-level leader, co-chair of the Campus Foundations Team, which is their Safe &amp; Civil Team, and she participates in high-quality professional development such as Columbia University Teachers College Writing Institute. She's a learner. She's seeking her master's degree in educational leadership, and she balances high expectations with a humble and effective approach to learning. Ms. Connor, Jennifer Connor, principal at Miller Heights, stated, "Kelly is passionate about literacy, individual writing development, and the art of reading. She consistently creates engaging and high-level instruction for all academic and social and emotional levels of her students. We are very fortunate to have Ms. Sanders as part of our Miller Heights learning family." Congratulations, Kelly. All right, and next up, Jill Fritz. She's being recognized by the Belton Rotary Club. And Jill teaches at Southwest Elementary, and her principal, Stacy Cox. Jill's a second-grade teacher at Southwest, and she's in her 20th year in education, all with Belton. Ms. Fritz has a quiet, gentle command of the classroom. She's a master at establishing trusting relationships with her students. She never misses an opportunity to use positive reinforcement, consistently recognizing students for positive characteristics and effort. She builds team spirit in her classroom as students celebrate their peers and even vote for a Class Writer of the Month. Stacy Cox, principal at Southwest Elementary, stated, "Ms. Fritz's students have no doubt that she wants them to be successful, and most importantly, that she cares for them. Her positive words challenge each student to grow and be confident in what they know. Whether a student is encountering a difficult reading passage or difficult behavioral choices, you can always hear Ms. Fritz tell them that they can do it." So congratulations.
Next up is our Big Red Community Partner of the Month. As the proud beneficiary of the district's annual Spirit Chain campaign, the United Way of Central Texas has been involved in the exciting annual tradition that gets all BISD campuses involved in helping others. After planning and executing fundraising activities at each campus, students have the opportunity to truly see how every little bit counts when they run their donations across the football field in the form of a red-and-white Spirit Chain. Over the years, this event has created many special moments for students and their families, all centered around the important life lesson of giving back to the community. This year's Spirit Chain campaigns are underway now in preparation for the September 28th football game. Beyond this exciting fall event, the United Way of Central Texas touches many of our students and their families through their important work that leverages the skills and resources of many nonprofit agencies, experts, and volunteers to offer quality health and human support services to our community. In a unique offering tonight, the board would like to invite Stephanie Obanion, the Executive Director of the United Way of Central Texas, up to the podium to actually kind of tell us a little bit more about how they impact our community.
Thank you so much. It's such an honor to be here and accept something so special from people that I care so much about personally. Got to put a little shout-out to my Class 89 peeps up there. So proud. Sorry, had to do that. I want to thank BISD for the continued partnership that you all give to United Way, and I think that the work that's done in our communities together, we are truly making change in the lives of our families and our neighbors and the children that are impacted. United Way made such a large shift, probably 10 years ago worldwide, and then we accepted that challenge here in Bell County in 2012. So United Way is not the United Way of what you might remember, where we just raise money, we have some campaign fundraisers, and we raise money and we hand it out. While we still do that, certainly, it's through the lens of impact. It's through this lens of economic and community impact, and it's through the pillars of health, education, and financial stability. And everything we do, every partner we support, has to have measurable results in those areas. And we come together as a community. We collaboratively focus on challenges that our community are facing, and we've identified these issues, and we're working together to make change in those areas. And so, yes, certainly, while we do raise money and the campaigns are so important... And so, yes, certainly while we do raise money and the campaigns are so important, it truly is going to make a lasting change in someone's life, and that's the change that you see in United Way today. I'll leave you with just a couple of programs that I want to make sure that you're aware of. I think one of the best-kept secrets in Bell County, really, all over the country, is the 211. And that is a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week help hotline. I would think every teacher may want to have some cards in their classroom when they come across a family that's experiencing some sort of difficulty. Maybe not a difficulty, maybe it's a grandparent that just needs to get on some home-delivered meals or needs a little help with healthcare. That number is helpful 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And you have an annual report in your hands that I won't read or go back through, but we're answering over 50,000 calls right here in Bell County on the east side. So, just be aware of that. Keep cards with you. When you come across someone that needs some help and you don't know where to send them, give them a 211 card, and that'll get them to the right help at the right time. Again, we fund 26 partners working together. We have initiatives in-house that we're administering that are helping families become financially stable and to be sufficient and independent, and that's the ultimate goal. And we love B I S D. We love that we have resources in this community for families and students to access, and we want to continue to grow together, working together. So, I'm really looking forward to the Spirit Chain game. That's one of my favorite things in the year, is to see all those kids drag out all those Spirit Chains across the field. So, the work and the impact being made in this community would not be possible without the generosity of B I S D and the partnership we have with you all. I'll leave you with one final thought. We raised $1.2 million last year in workplace campaigns. Over 80% of that, about 82% of that, comes from folks giving less than $5 a paycheck. And that's what motivated me to leave a 20-year career in the chamber of commerce industry and come do this full-time, because it just moves me to see what we're all doing together. So, thank you so much, and thanks for the extra time to say a few words. Hope I didn't take you.
Before you go, before she goes, though, I do want to say, because I not only serve with Stephanie on the United Way Board, but also volunteer at an agency that receives United Way funds, and so even today at our partner agency, Helping Hands, I passed out several 211 cards, and I see it firsthand. I see how it all works, I see the whole process, and I see what people's money does, and I'm part of that little, you know, pipeline of making sure that donor's money gets to the places it exactly needs to be and that people's lives are really being changed, and they do great work over there.
And we're certainly appreciative of the partnership that we have with you and all that you do for our community and for our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. And Stephanie did bring additional 211 cards and annual reports.
Little snapshot.
Yeah, right at the back, so campus administrators, take some extra cards as you walk out.
Always more.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you for that. The next item that will take up on the agenda is public comments. I don't see that anyone has signed up. Is that correct, Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Okay, then we will move on to consider, discuss, and take appropriate action regarding the employment, resignation, and addition of administrative employees. Our presenter will be Todd Schiller, as soon as he wades through the crowd. Good evening, Mr. Schiller.
Good evening. We have one administrative recommendation for you tonight. It's Lexi Newberry, Assistant Principal with Tarver Elementary. Lexi is in the room. Lexi, stand up. Lexi received her bachelor's and master's degree from U M H B. She is in her 13th year in Belton I S D, comes to us from Lake Belton Middle School this year, but has 12 years of experience in elementary. So, we're very excited to have her a part of the team and recommend her tonight. In addition to that, we have eight other professional positions, which you can see in your board packet, and we received and accepted one resignation.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve? Motion from Ms. Lee, second from Mr. Norwood, all approved. Show of hands. Thank you. That has its unanimous, like you. Okay. Next item on the agenda is review and discuss Special Education Update. Ms. Jennifer Ramirez.
Hello, good evening, and thank you, Mr. Flor, for asking about my special program department. I have an amazing team, and I love to talk about them. So, of course, my department continues to focus on the vision and mission as set out by our district, and so we take it very seriously that we are charged with preparing students for tomorrow's world. And this visual kind of gives you a pictorial view of special programs. So, we have all the students in our district, and then we have a group of students that have disabilities or impairments. And then, within that group, there are some students who are identified as needing some accommodations and/or special strategies, and those students can get their service through Section 504. And so, we have about 1,300 students who receive services under that program, and it means that a group of individuals get together, talk about kids' needs, put a plan in place, specifically identifying those needs, and then that gets sent to all the teachers so that it's properly communicated what those students need. And then, if a student requires more than just accommodations and strategies, then they could be eligible for I D E A or Special Education, and those are students who require specially-designed instruction. They also have a meeting called an I E P or an Art Committee Meeting where we line out what that specially-designed instruction is, and then that is communicated to all the staff members. And currently, we have about 12% of students in the district receiving Special Education. And so, as you would expect to see, as the district number of students grows, so does the Special Programs Department, and so you can see, and I would venture to say that even since this presentation was made, we have increased by about 30 more students just in the past couple of weeks. So, there are 11 eligibilities that students can have that would give them Special Education services. And so, to be clear about this, this just talks about a student's primary eligibility. So, you could have a student who has an orthopedic impairment and another health impairment, but according to this chart, we have nine students who their primary disability is the orthopedic impairment. Does that make sense? So, as you can see, the way that we make the majority of kids eligible for Special Education is, that would be a student with a learning disability with 419 students, that that's their primary eligibility for services. Once we have eligibility, we have a continuum of ways that we can place students so that they can get their services. And so, we have the general education setting, which would be what we hope for all students as much as possible, because we want them to have that least restrictive environment. So, if kids are in general ed all day long, they could be receiving some inclusion support. A special education teacher or paraprofessional comes in to support them academically or behaviorally in the classroom. Then, the next level of support would be resource, and we hope that typically this is a smaller number of students in the classroom. It is instruction provided by a special education teacher, and the majority of these students receive a modified curriculum or modified TEACs, which means they're still responsible for all the TEACs that everybody else is responsible for, just maybe not the depth and breadth of the TEAC as it is written. Then, if a student needs more support than modified TEACs, then you could get your service in functional academics or life skills. That's where students typically receive alternate curriculum or alternate TEACs. And these students take the STAR alternate test, so students who are in general ed or in resource, they take the same STAR test, but then if you receive alternate TEACs, then you could take a different state test. Then, we have a behavior support system called AIMS, and AIMS has a large continuum of services, too. Some AIMS students receive their services in the general ed classroom or in resource, or they could be self-contained AIMS where they stay in a special program all day long. Our P P C D stands for the Preschool Program for Children with Disabilities, and these are students who are age three through five. Until they turn six, they're considered P P C D age. And so, the majority of these kids go to BECS, but sometimes we do have P P C D kids who are on the elementary campus in kindergarten. And then, on the opposite end of the spectrum, we have the Delta Program, and Delta is the 18-plus program, and that's for kids who have pretty much met all the requirements for graduation. They have all their credits, they are ready to graduate, but they still have some I E P goals that they need to work on to prepare for future planning, for employability, and just basic self-care. So, here's a list of some instructional services and related services that we provide from our department, and so I'll just highlight a few that just are maybe a little different or you might be interested in. So, students who receive auditory impairment services, we actually partner with Temple I S D because they're considered the regional day school for the deaf for our area, and so if a student receives services for an auditory impairment, the special ed teachers come from Temple and work with our students here. Then, another one of interest maybe that a lot of people don't know about is orientation and mobility. That's typically partnered with vision services, and that's for students who have visual impairments. And so, we don't have enough students to have a full-time employee on our staff, so we contract for some of these services. So, music therapy, I contract with a music therapist because I have a small number of students who receive that service. Physical therapy, we also contract for, but there are numerous students who receive transportation as a related service, and these are just related to their disabilities, but they receive these services because of their eligibility and their needs. Another thing, personal care services, is a way that we document in the I E P meeting what our staff members are doing to meet needs like queuing, helping them transition from place to place, like if we're escorting students, could be restrooming, could be feeding. How are we helping kids other than just their academic needs? So, you may have heard, if you've been watching the news, about the strategic plan that T E A has set out for Special Education. And so, that came out in April of 2018, and we're still processing through and developing plans to meet those requirements. But the basic premise is that they've, T E A has outlined supports that we need to improve or put in place, because the U.S. Department of Education said, "T E A, you're not doing a very good job here in Texas." And so, basically, it has to do with a failure to identify all students with special needs, and then just how are we going to serve them in general. So, T E A said, "Okay, I'll give you five focus areas that the plan encompass, you know, goes around." And so, one is monitoring, and that's going to include either desk reviews or onsite visits from T E A. So, they'll come, gather information, and then let us know if there's something specifically that we need to do in Belton to improve our practices. Then they have a section that's identification, evaluation, and placement, and this is just the general mandated child find charge that we have that says, "We are responsible for looking for students who have a disability. Even if they don't come to school, we still are responsible for giving out information that says, 'If you think that a kid has a disability, let us know, and we're going to test them and we're going to find out.'" Then there's a training, support, and development section of the plan, and that provides, hopefully, a statewide professional development. It's going to, a group that's going to update the dyslexia handbook, and we will receive more guidance on how we're going to serve students with dyslexia. Then there's a student, family, and community engagement portion, and this basically has to do with outreach. It has to do with talking more about it, putting it on social media, providing some brochures, increasing the talk. They're going to have a call center where if you have a question about what the district should be doing, you can call and ask questions. And then, there's technical assistant networks. Now, this is already kind of happening where there's a, like the service center has a focus. They're kind of the resident experts on a topic, and they're responsible for sending that information out to the whole state. So, they're redesigning this network system for 10 different networks. So, there'll be one regional center that's responsible for child find, one center that's responsible for inclusive practices or autism, and they gather information and research, and then they send that out to the rest of the state. So, this will be in process as we go through the year. My very favorite part of this department is the way that we have increased opportunities of creating those supportive campus cultures as, you know, one of our district initiatives. And so, the pictures from here have to do both with Special Olympics that we started back. I think Special Olympics used to happen in the district a while back, so last year we started that again, and then also pre-prom. The peers, the general ed peers, working with our most needy students are the most compassionate and caring and genuinely love these kids and build relationships with them. And I see them do things outside of school. I see them partner with families to help them out, even outside of school. And we have several things like that. Like I even noted, I thought about, you know, some of the little moves that we make, like at one of the campuses, I think it was Sparta, they sent out a message to all the staff, and they said, "Tomorrow, we're," it was on the National Day of Autism Awareness, where they said, "We're going to light it up blue." And the staff members all wore blue that day, just talking about it and just thinking about it and including it in their campus cultures. Then, I wanted to highlight four specific partnerships that I think our department does a good job in meeting the unique needs, academic, behavioral, and social-emotional needs of students. And of course, as we talked about a little bit when Dr. Warren was up, about Emergent Tree, and so we have two ways we are partnering with them. One is on the Tier Two Behavioral System, Bridges, and all campuses are involved in that framework, as well as the Solid Roots Tier Three system, and that is implemented on the campuses that have AIMS. Then, I've also brought in a curriculum resource called Goal Book, and Goal Book is provided for all our staff members, special ed staff members. It takes the TEACs and the standards and partners it with best practices, research-based best practices, strategies, data collection tools, and different ways to support that particular TEAC. So, that's a resource for the teachers. And then, again, I talked about Special Olympics, our second year in Special Olympics. Bowling is the biggest hit around. We're going to hopefully add some track and field events this year. And then last is C R C G, that's the Community Resource Coordination Group. I go to a meeting every month where we partner with several different resources in our community. So, it could be CPS, juvenile probation, central counties that used to be M H M R, schools, workforce solution. All these people sit in a room, and we talk about kids, and we talk about, "All right, what are you doing for this student?" Or, "We're worried about this student, so how can we partner and collaborate on working with kids?" And so, that's my highlight of special programs.
Yeah, thank you very much. Now, the PALS program is part of this, too, right?
Well, PALS isn't specifically part of it, but many of the campuses have included PALS with our special needs, making kind of that partner relationship. Definitely.
Yeah, I've got a seventh grader, North Belton, who's part of the PALS P E program, and some of the stories are just absolutely heartwarming that she comes home with every day. day. I think actually, in the first week of school, her partner asked for a new partner. And I think she's won him over. But, yeah. Of the 1,400 students or so that we've got, I mean, what does that break down, like elementary, middle, high school? Like, is it fairly evenly distributed? Do we have a lump somewhere?
I do look, usually a couple of times a year, I try to pull numbers from each campus and look at their percentage of special education students on their campus. And I would say, in general, it's pretty even. Now, there are a few pockets that have more AIMS students than anywhere else because, you know, we only have one middle school that has AIMS. We have two elementaries that has AIMS. And so, you might see pockets of a population or a kind of service at different campuses, but in overall numbers, it's pretty equal.
Yeah. So, school, so it's Lake Belton Middle, right? Lakewood, and then?
Tarver has AIMS, and then Belton High School.
All right. How do we compare with the surrounding districts, right? I mean, is our population high as a relation?
Overall percentage of special ed? Yeah, I would say that ours is probably one of the higher. We have a few theories about that. I'd like to say that part of it is that we, you know, we do take child find very seriously, and we do evaluate many students throughout the year. But then, also, you know, we have a theory that we tend to be a district of choice, and we have families that move here specifically to receive special ed services.
Yeah, I've definitely heard that, so I'm supporting that theory, yeah. I mean, it sounds like you're doing a great job.
I really have a good team. I have, I have, I've had the opportunity to increase the expertise of my team every school year.
So, with the higher population, I mean, do we have some specific challenges that, you know, that we're facing, and is there something that, you know, we need and we need to be doing up here?
Yeah, we, one of our challenges right now is just space. And we, you know, our special needs students have, require a lot of time in terms of developing IEPs and holding ART meetings, and then rooms are, of course, at a premium in our district with the number of students that we have. So, we're really excited about having a new elementary school, a middle school, and a high school, so we can add some sections that we need to add to break down some sizes on campuses and provide some opportunity to kind of share the wealth. But, space is, space is really tough for us right now, yeah.
You mentioned pre-prom, and I'm sitting here with a big smile. I was able to attend pre-prom with my son back in April, and just like any other student, he was just mortified that I decided to go. Just simply mortified. And, yeah, and I wanted to dance. He's like, "Not here, not with you." And so, I was relegated to a table in the back with somebody else's parent and told to sit there until it was over. So, yeah, very nice event, though, from what I could tell in the back. Very nice event. Any other questions for?
I just want to say thanks. I know you deal with such a wide range of things going on, and my kids were in PALS, and I think all three of them were, and they had really neat stories to tell. And my son had a very special relationship with one of the kids in high school for four years, well, six years, all the way through seventh grade, and it's really rewarding, you know, to be a part of that. And I know there's some things that, you know, with the behavior things, you know, being lumped in with some of that, I know that makes it hard on you guys, and space being something that's tough, that proximity of some of those programs being right there with the other kids, it's really distracting, and some of those things. I'd like to maybe see some of that maybe, I don't know, it's really, it's really hard on you guys, but thank you all. I know that's really tough to work with that stuff.
That's our work. We're up for the challenge.
Jennifer, I have loved special ed in Belton for many years, but I just have a question. With the kids that are a little bit higher functioning that are mainstreamed, what programs do we have for our teachers to maybe educate what to look for with these different diagnoses? Is that something that we've been able to expand to a little bit more?
So, I would say that that's something my department is always willing to take to the campus. You know, if a campus leader wants training to come to their campus, we are certainly willing to do that. I would say it's something that we talk about every year, we struggle with, you know, how do we get that information out to everyone? And we're always refining that process. This year, we didn't do it the same, but last year, at the beginning of the year, we had the opportunity for teachers to sign up for different professional development opportunities that they wanted, and I think that's a good model for what teachers need, what they're seeking. And so, hopefully, we can do that in the future.
Thanks.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay. The next item on the agenda is issues, concerns for future agenda or administrative reports. And just as a refresher for some and new for others, this is an area where if you've got something that you would like for administration to add for future agenda, this is an opportunity to say that if you'd like. So, I'll start with Mr. Flor. Do you have anything? Dr. McGovern, or Mr. Norwood?
No.
Ms. Lee? No. Ty, do you have anything?
Thank you. Appreciate that. We'll move on to future events. As you've already, it has already been shared out, we have September 25th dedication of the Pitt and Grefein Arts Building. We have, we're going to conference next week, that's September 28th through the 30th. For those who haven't, if you haven't had an opportunity to talk about housing and all of those details, just talk to Connie about that. We have team building. Let me go back on September 26th. Kay Douglas is coming. That's going to be fun. She's lots of fun. It's Ty's best friend. Yes, that's going to be fun. And then, we have, we have Beef on, I'm sorry, we have the Attendance Boundary Meeting at Harris Community Center, October 1. We have Beef on October 9, and our next regular meeting is October the 15th. Y'all have any?
Beef meaning the red carpet event?
Yes.
Right. October the 9th.
Yes, and we need to know if you plan to come, so if you'd visit with Connie about either a yes or a no, and we'll take care of you if you'll let her know this evening so we can RSVP.
I'm waiting. Anybody on the board have any further?
You started talking about the conference. Do we, do we want to, how do we want to do that as far as selecting what we go to? Do you want this to be, hey, you know, essentially free-for-all, we select what we want to? Or do we want to divide and conquer? Are there certain things you want to make sure we cover?
Well, for the new board members, then typically, those of us who've been on the board will kind of go with them and go to those needed items. There may be something on that's listed you haven't already signed up or identified what you've wanted to go to. It'd be good to go to different items as a team, but I think we'll get more accomplished if we divide and conquer. It just kind of depends on...
It appears to all be on an app.
Yeah, yeah, I've downloaded the app.
Even on the website, there is no, there is no list of the breakout sessions. It's all on an app that you download. You don't even have to log in or set up an account. It's just there. So, I've already punched in a few, and I tried to friend you, but you ignored me.
Well, then, there you go.
All righty then. Let me log in here real quick.
Anyway, I have had an opportunity to review the program, but I can, and I can make some recommendations as well if you'd like me to, or you can go to whatever you like.
Yeah, I guess part of my point was, if there's anything you would like to go to or get information on that you're not able to go to, certainly let me know, and I'm more than willing to shape my schedule around it, yeah.
And I would like to mention that we are presenting two sessions. Angela has led that for us, and I'm sorry, I don't remember the exact titles of those this evening. You want to talk about those a second, Angela? So, you may want to come and watch us present, is what I'm saying. Or you may not be interested.
I want to tell them, I don't know. So, the first one is with Todd and me and Susan on 7:30 on Friday morning.
Oh, yeah.
When I saw that they had, I had submitted three proposals, and they accepted two of the three, and the first one they said was going to be at 7:30 on Friday morning. And so, I thought, ah, you know, lawyers, early in the morning is hard for us, especially this one. So, I sent it out to Susan and Todd, and I said, "7:30." They accepted it, but 7:30, and like, immediately, I get back from Todd, "Sure." "Oh, okay."
What's it called? Angela, what's it called?
And so, it's, well, I haven't come up with the cute name, but the official name is Retaining High Quality Staff Through Evaluation and Documentation. Just, I think we do. We do an excellent job here of setting high expectations, and then we have a great system of working with staff to reach those goals through constant evaluation, conversation, feedback, and it's why you have the people sitting in this room, frankly, because it's about these people and how we've been able to build such a great team. And it's been, I believe, great teamwork between HR and the superintendent and your leadership team with my help and facilitation to really, working toward getting really great documentation and systems in place. So, we're real proud of that work, so we wanted to share it. And then, the second one's Saturday at 1:00, and it is a panel with Dr. Kincanon and your board president, hopefully she makes it, and then the superintendent of Midway ISD, along with Peter Rusick, who is that board's president, and also, it's a, the concept is, I'm on the Waco ISD School Board. I'm also an attorney representing you guys. And then, Peter Rusick is on, is the president of the Midway ISD Board, and he represents the Waco ISD Board. So, it's kind of this network, and then we've also invited Dr. Marcus Nelson, the superintendent in Waco ISD, to participate. So, we're going to have a panel, and the conversation is how to build trust between the superintendent and board to build a great team, and y'all exemplify that, and we do great work here, and so, I thought that might be an interesting panel, conversation about how you, y'all are a how-to, how to do it, but also the perspectives of a lawyer who's on another board and us versus. So, anyway, that's kind of the, that's kind of the attraction for that one, and that's Saturday at 1:00. And I don't really know, I don't remember what the title is. I think Building Trust?
Can't remember.
Building Trust Between Superintendent and Board Strategies. Yeah, so, welcome.
I'll send you an invite for that one. I have the location on my calendar.
A friend of Janet, by the way.
Oh, good job. Good job.
Well, it is currently 6:43. If there is nothing further, we are adjourned.